May 4th Select Board Meeting. And one of our members will be attending by Zoom. Lee Daken, can you hear me, Lee? You OK out there?
I can hear you. I can hear everyone. Thank you so much.
OK.
Sorry I can't be there.
It's OK. The first item on our agenda is to approve our minutes from our April 20th Select Board Meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the April 20, 2022 Select Board Meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Lee has the motion and Lee is the second. Any changes, corrections, omissions, errors, anything on the minutes?
I have none.
I have none.
I don't know. Also. All those in favor of approving the minutes as written, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Next item on our agenda is citizens' comments. If there was someone here that would like to address the board regarding an issue that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. Are there any citizens' comments? I don't see any hands up here in person, and I don't see any hands up on the screen with all our Zoom participants. And there was no answers for any questions online, nothing like that either? The next item is old business. And Julie, can you take us through our old business list?
I can. There's not a ton at this time. The first would be the solar field. We had, I issued or I sent in your exercise notice that was, got an email back saying it had been received, was acceptable. So I'm now working on trying to identify an appraiser. I have found two firms at this point. One is out of Boston. That is a nationwide appraiser. I'm feeling like maybe a little more than what we really want to deal with. And there is one in Burlington. So I'm going to reach out to both. We'll get some cost from both and time availability from both. So I'm just waiting to hear back. Lee and I are working on, I'm still trying to collect all the data from Green Mountain. Once I have that, I will, you know, Lee and I will start the analysis. I know Bill Lindsay wanted to help as well. So still trying to collect that data. It hasn't been super easy getting those numbers from them. So Lee gave me a couple of other ideas. So we're still moving forward, getting the information. The only other thing that I have is just to notice of some upcoming community meetings that we have scheduled. Monday, May 9th, this coming Monday is the ARPA Community Forum, where I'm hoping to get good representation from the Chester residents and citizens on ways that they would like to spend the ARPA dollars that we are receiving. Town of Chester will be receiving about $900,000. Sounds like a lot, really isn't when it comes to government-type work. So just wanting to hear from the community on how they would like those, their tax dollars. So how the community would like to have their tax dollars spent.
We'll have snacks.
And we'll have snacks, yes.
That has to be allocated by 2024?
Has to be allocated by 2024, spent by 2026. And again, I have the department heads list of items that we feel would be a good use. I'm not planning to share those on Monday night. I don't want to hinder people's thoughts. I want people from the community to feel free to speak open their ideas. And then we'll have future meetings where we can combine things and kind of wrestle through what the community would really love to see. So this is step one.
Basically just to get a list, ideas out there to have people thinking about stuff?
Yeah, and I have had a couple of things brought to my attention that I never would have thought of. So it's already, people are already thinking, so it's good. Then on Tuesday, I'm sorry, Thursday, May 26th, 7:00 will be the Public Safety Forum at the new Public Safety Building. That will be an opportunity for Chester residents to come speak to the Chiefs of Police, Fire and Ambulance about what public safety means to you and our community, things that you would like to see from that department or from that division of town to start bridging and having some open communication between our Public Safety Services and the community and the citizens of Chester. So there'll be more coming on that. So stay tuned. And then Sunday, June 5th, 7:30 to 10:00 is the first of the Public Safety Department will be doing their Community Breakfast, $10 for adult, 5 for kids. So hoping that people will come support that. Again, great opportunity to connect the community with our Public Safety Departments.
Great.
That's it for me.
Any other board members have any old business?
Have none.
Moving right along. Lee, you're OK out there?
I'm good. I don't have any new old business.
New old business.
Oh, let me share one more thing I got. Sorry. So I did receive an email from Regional Planning this morning. The state will be doing traffic counts on Route 10, Route 103 south of Flamstedt, and Route 11 east of, east of the green. So if you see the strips, the state is doing traffic counts, which they'll then share with me when they get them. And I'm excited about the 103.
Route 10.
I'm more excited about the traffic counts on 103 because I'm hoping to write a grant for a scoping study for the sidewalk down to the high school. Those traffic counts will be really important.
Oh, that and the 103.
Yes.
Is that where the scripts are going on the south end?
Yeah.
But they're going on Route 10 also.
Yes.
So Julie, that's both count and speed or just?
That is just traffic counts.
Is there a way we can suggest to them that they collect speed data as well?
Speed data we can get from our own signs.
Right, at those same locations? Because we don't have signs on Route 10.
No, we would on 103. Let me ask about Route 10. Route 11 just east of the common, so just east of the green, yeah.
When you look through that, see if they have any crash data on Route 10?
I do have the crash data.
Oh, you do have that?
I have the updated crash data.
So when we put it all together?
Yeah.
That's great.
I do have that. I got that yesterday. I will see if we can do the speed study.
Also?
I am.
Anybody else? I think I already asked that, didn't I?
Yeah.
No more old new business. Next item on our agenda is an update on a topic that's been around for about a year now. We've been discussing it and stuff. And there's been reasons why we haven't gone a little quicker and faster than some people have thought we should as far as the action on this. And it's regarding a police advisory committee. Jim Baker is going to be doing our study, I believe, at the end of May. He's going to be starting it. And part of the reason for some of the delays that we've had is his schedule to fit into our schedule so we could work things out on our end and stuff. Some of the questions that we had regarding this on were what would an advisory committee look like? Do we want an advisory committee? Does the community want an advisory committee? Does the board want an advisory committee? And it came up at our last meeting, but it was under citizens' comments. And when things come up under citizens' comments, we can't really have much of a discussion on it. And we could take the comment in, but it should be a posted agenda item to really discuss if we have any questions or ask about it and stuff. My questions were, how does the board want to proceed with this? What is the board's take on this, a police advisory committee?
So I guess the question that comes immediately to mind is what's the responsibility of that committee? What's the role of that committee? What's the scope of that committee? And I don't know the answer to those questions. And I'm hoping that when the review of the current policies, et cetera, of the Police Department is done, that might answer that question as to whether or not we need it and what they would actually do as that advisory committee.
Well, go ahead.
We reviewed different ones a year ago or so.
Policies, those are policies, yeah.
The policies are what communities were doing with their committees. It was something. But I think that that's when we decided that we needed input from the consultant. And so I think in, just for what we know, it would be a good thing to have, but we need clarification on what the direction is.
So Heather, just to follow up on what you're saying, what do you see the role of that commission would be for advisory committee?
Well, as I recall reading what other towns had done, they varied a lot from reviewing things to participating and hiring to public, community policing events. You know, I'm, I can't give you a direct answer. But as I recall some of those, those documents that we read and how other towns were doing it, it's really an interface between the police and the public and giving feedback. And, you know, I don't, I don't think transparency and participation can hurt.
No, absolutely not, yeah.
So in my view, I think it would be a good thing. Am I ready to say exactly what you've asked? No, I'm not educated about it enough. I don't know what the community really needs, all the community. And so, you know, Julie's idea of doing it as part of the assessment seemed logical to me at the time. There's been COVID, there's been all sorts of other things that have kind of pushed this down further than maybe we thought it would be. However, Julie's point last week, we do want to set it up and do it right, if we're going to do that.
I also have, have a question.
Go ahead, Lee.
Can we make, can we, after Jim has come down and done the PD internal assessment, could we schedule him to present to us his thoughts and directions that we might consider and so forth?
Do you want me to talk about his plan?
Sure. Yeah, I would think that would be a part of the presentation at the end of it when he does, after he has prepared that document. And in the preparation of that document also are going to be quite a few community forums to get the input of the public regarding this topic, which helps. My idea on, we talked a little bit about oversight of advisory. And the oversight is, I think, the direction that this board wanted to go as far as not oversight.
Right, yeah.
Because oversight was a little too much power, I thought, in the, in the control of citizens that weren't really familiar with what's going on in the Police Department. And it involved a lot more legal aspects to it as far as information sharing and things like that. Now, that being said, I think any committee that we set up that helps with communication, that helps get the message out between the Police Department and the public and helps that transparency happen would be a good thing. Now, what shape or form it's going to take, that could be determined as we go forward. And I think Jim Baker would have a big part in that as far as his report goes. And that is coming up relatively soon, so that helps.
Yes.
Can you fill us in on a little more with Jim and how that's all going to work?
So when he, I'm meeting with him next week. We're going to finalize exactly the scope of what he's going to do. But it's going to start with him meeting with all of our police officers, doing a full review of how our Police Department operates, review our policies, review our procedures, and review our day-to-day activity and how we do things. He will then speak with each officer independently and find out any concerns they have, any things that they would like to see. They have some ideas of what they would like to see there, how they would like to see their department improve. So he will hear from them. There will be, Jim and I have talked about a series of focus group meetings where maybe there's a group, a focus group of businesses and a focus group of the charity organizations in town, a focus group of concerned citizens that live outside of the village and a group of concerned citizens that live inside of the village. Just trying, because what policing means to those different groups and demographics is different. So he wants to meet with, you know, a good cross-section of the community. What are they looking for? What is community, community policing to me will be very different than community policing to you. So what, what do people in the town view as, you know, community policing has become just a big tagline, but it has different meanings to different people and it's not just one definition. So it's really weeding through that. The community will be very heavily involved. The outcome of that will, should be a report that kind of guides where we go. This is what your community wants, so this is how you maybe need to tailor your Police Department. Maybe you need to hire more officers. Maybe you need to spend more time running radar and outsource other things. You know, what does that look like? So Jim will be able to guide us a little bit on that whole process. He's digesting the conversation that him and I had the other day and kind of thinking through the best approaches. He has a very good reputation. It's very hard to get him. We managed to snag him. I'm very happy about that. So I believe it'll be a good process.
And have you talked to him about the community committee?
I have let him know that there has been conversation about having an advisory committee. He is definitely going to include pros, cons, things you need to consider if, if that is the route you want to go. Yeah.
So for me, so Colonel Baker certainly has experience with state police and was recently assigned to help corrections, figure out some things. And at the same time, he's also heavily involved with mental health of first responders throughout the state. And so I think he'll be able to grasp, grasp buy-in from the public and the department and so on. And for me personally, until we learn more, I'm certainly not ready to jump ahead on anything. I think this process was started by the board a year plus ago, and we've made it this far and we're a couple of weeks from him coming in. So I think it'd be good for us to wait on making any actions and seeing what he has to say. Because I truly have confidence he'll do a great job.
Great, I agree with you, Ben.
Has he done, I mean, he's done evaluations for other police departments. Is that a document that we could probably get or see a sample of one or a, is it a public document?
That I don't know. I can certainly ask. Some of them get very, very specific of internal issues, but I could certainly ask if there's one that he could share with us. And they're all tailored. Ours is a little bit different than what he's done in others. Ours has a strong community element, whereas other ones have not. It's been, OK, come tell us what's wrong with our department.
Depending on issues, it could be.
Yeah, they're definitely tailored. But I could certainly see if he has a copy, you could see his style.
Well, then maybe the question would be something similar or related to what we're looking for. Because if it's totally off-base and it's totally something different, then it doesn't, wouldn't help that.
Yeah, I will ask him.
And Julie, if he's coming at the end of May, what timeframe do you think it'll be until we have a report in hand?
He felt it would be a good six weeks.
Oh.
Because, because of the level of community involvement I'm asking for that I think is really important.
But it's not six months?
No.
And that helps us with the timeframe? Not that we want to hold anyone hard to those timeframes, but it may make some people happy to know that we're going to be discussing it in the next eight, 12, you know, couple of months. OK, good. That's quick.
And part of this discussion was just to get the word out to the public, to make sure that we haven't forgotten about it, we didn't drop it. We're not going to, you know, put it off and stuff. We're not kicking the can down the road. We're doing something. And in Julie's words, we just want to make sure we're doing it right. It seems like we're on the right path.
And I'd like to encourage everyone, because we discuss communications and getting information out there, I'd like to encourage anyone who's in Sound of My Voice or print or whatever, tell your neighbors about this, because we really want everybody in the community to have an opportunity to be a part of this particular issue.
Yeah.
I don't know if I can call it an issue.
Yeah, you are.
It's more as an opportunity.
Yeah, an issue.
Really, this is the time for.
Learning more.
Growth. And if, if we go back, there's issues that, and, you know, there's always going to be frustrations from someone with the Police Department. And, but growing and seeing how we can make that communication better. And I think that communication and growth is key. But I think as far as that communication and the involvement, you know, what are the things we love about our Police Department? What are the things we need to make better and so on? And that's how we need to go about that.
Well, and I think it's important to remind, because this conversation started a year ago. So the Police Department is not, this is not just being done with the Police Department. I am going through each department of the town and doing internal assessments. Police and ambulance are ones where I have needed to hire an external person because I cannot adequately assess the Police Department. I don't know their job. Same thing with ambulance, same thing with fire. So ambulance was done first because that was the department that we really needed to rebuild. So we brought in Dan Manns last year to do that assessment. It worked, it was very successful, made some great internal changes. The department is growing and doing much better. And police, it's just all timing with the new building and just seemed appropriate. So fire, we did an internal assessment. All the firemen were spoken to and we've made some changes there. And I'm now in the midst of public works. But, so this is not just we selected police. This is part of a very long process of assessing each department, taking stock of where we're at. And I deal with department heads every day. I almost never deal with the staff under them. So part of this assessment has been one-on-ones with the staff. Where do you have concerns? Or, you know, from me, from your boss, from whoever, you know? So it's been a good learning opportunity for me. These are people I've worked with for 18 years. And I've learned a lot that I did not know, even for the number of years I worked for the town. So it's been very helpful and successful so far.
And all of those, all of those activities not only bring out concerns, but they also, to Ben's point, a good assessment can say this, your standard of practice for X, Y, and Z, but I don't know what it is, is really going well. So don't change that. What's fit, what's working well, you won't fix it, but you have that information. So that's positive feedback I'm sure we're going to get, just like we did with ambulance and other departments. What is good, not just?
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's important to emphasize the positive part like Ben, Ben was saying. And I totally agree with that.
Well, and you don't know what you don't know. So that was my thing. I don't know what I don't know. So if there are things that we could do better or things that we're doing really well and we want to expound on, then that's the purpose, so.
Good, excellent.
Any, any other questions, comments, or concerns about this topic before we move on? I think that was a good update to get people informed about what's happening with it and stuff. And so we can speak with, yeah. And you're going to have to come all the way up to the microphone.
Right here.
And give us your name. No, you don't want to do that? I saw, I saw your hand up.
I'll say something, but I don't want to go.
Jeannie?
People on Zoom can't hear you.
We can't hear you on Zoom.
They have to, sorry.
Sorry, I was going to say. I would just say that when you make the committee up, whenever that happens, is that you have people, you have people on the committee that are in law enforcement, in, you know, emergency dispatch, community building, people who know that field. And so that, keep politics out of it and just make it about making the infrastructure of it really strong. And we have quite a few existing police officers that are high in the ranks in Chester that have been in for years that could offer a lot of their time in that. So that's what I would say, is just make sure whoever gets on there is, are people that don't have like a political agenda, but people who want to better the, you know, emergency dispatch and emergency services, like the logistics of things. My dad was a big-time police officer for many years. And he always talked about community building as a police officer, and it really starts with the police officers building that relationship with the residents. So I would start with them building relations, like giving them the tools and the ability to be able to have conversations with people rather than people feeling like they can go to them. If does that make sense?
Yeah, that's the goal. That is the goal, Jeannie.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you for those points and hopefully you'll be involved in this process as we go forward. Anybody else? All right. We're going to head on to our next item on our agenda, which is a public safety building update and a five-year plan. So I'm looking either towards Lee Gustafson?
Lee's going to do the presentation as the Chair of the Building Committee.
So I wanted to just give you a little bit of history of what we've done over the past couple of months. We've had discussions as this board, the Select Board, about what's the long-term goal of the emergency services departments? And how do we come to build community for that? So the Emergency Services Building Committee has met four or five times since we first started talking about this. And I've come up with a long-term plan that includes some on the five-year level. We haven't gotten out much beyond that. But the basic issues that we talked about is how do we, as the emergency services departments, reach out to the community? How do we impact the community? Because we want people to feel comfortable coming before the, either the police or fire or ambulance and knowing who they're dealing with. So we're looking at some community outreach issues. There's going to be an open house or open houses annually with demonstrations at the new building. And then similar events as needed or as opportunities come up for presentations. We did an open house when that building was first opened. There was a day-long event that included food and demonstrations and tours of the building and meeting the emergency services personnel. So that's one of the things that we talked about. We're going to have dinners during the wintertime, special activities. The National Night Out will be held at the new building. And so those are some things that are being planned as far as community outreach. And having the opportunity for people to feel welcome at the new building. But also part of that is to help people to understand that in order to access that building, you want to come in the front because that's where the access is. So looking out for how to direct people to approach the building from the front. So there's a couple of places that, right now, the, the property is being used for training. There's training that goes in on inside the building and the new, in the new rooms, classrooms, I guess, training areas inside. But also the area behind the building, the open areas, being used for a number of different exercises, including fire exercises, emergency services, medical services, the police are using it. And also it's being used for, and will be used for, regional forces training. And so far, we've had Springfield, Ludlow, and other communities attend some of the training events that have been put on there. And so that's one of the things that we looked at for a long-term plan is to see, how do we use this building? It's a great facility. There's a lot of good spaces that can be used both inside and out. So one of the, the main things is we want to encourage safety as part of that building. While it's a public building, it's not necessarily a community building. So again, we want people to come to the building, police or fire, ambulance from the front. So right now, it's easy access from the sides of the building, from the side of the property, that we're hoping to encourage people to come around to the front. So the five-year plan would be doing something with that flare, flat area in the back to enhance the training options. So at this point, we would be a host facility. And because of us hosting some of the trainings that go on, for example, the Vermont Fire Academy, if we host the training there, then our personnel don't have to pay the fee associated with that. So that would be one benefit for us. We could hold events for other emergency services group. We can have that area be used for emergency helicopter landings if necessary. And right now, we have about one to two landings per month. And in order to accommodate a helicopter landing in town, we have to have three to six people and two to three vehicles available whenever a helicopter lands in town. Whereas if we had the facility behind the building as an option for helicopters to land, wouldn't need anybody there. They could just land it. It would already be pre-approved by DART or somebody else that would want to go there. But it would require a little bit of work in that back part of the property to make it level in a flat area. bit of work in that back part of the property to make it level in a flat area. One of the plans for the building was to have lighting back there for illuminating that back training area. We didn't add that as part of the construction, but the electrical conduits in place for that lighting needs. And then there would be other additional resources we could add for fire training or dog training in the back of the property. Part of that would be adding a sidewalk in front of the building. And Julie addressed part of that as looking for grant money to build the sidewalk or walking path between that area of town to the high school. And so we could extend that just in front of the new emergency services building. Adding a crosswalk from the west side to east side of the road is something else because there is a sidewalk across the street, but we may need to get state approval for that because it would be across a state highway. And then landscaping plan was another thing that we've talked about. And so we thought that a memorial park would be a good addition. It would be something similar to what the Fire Academy has, a pillar in the middle with something for each one of the three services and a flagpole or two or three for the US flag, Vermont flag, and then one for each service. And then seating bench. And just an area that would be used for gathering or doing memorial services, that type of thing. Also, a little bit of adjustment to the existing parking areas, including northwest and southwest corners of the building, and then add in striping just to make those parking areas stand out. And then also, as part of that, we're looking at directing, like I said, directing traffic to the front of the building, limiting access, and specifically, people coming into where the emergency vehicles would be traveling or personnel coming.
I could do some of this.
And so there would be limited access. And that would include a fence that we talked about that kind of started this whole thing. And the thought was that a four-foot fence running from the front of the building along that southern property line all the way to the back would be enable, it would direct people, traffic around that fence to the front of the building, be four feet high, be black, it'd be chain links, you could see through it. So it wouldn't be a visual barrier, wouldn't necessarily be something that would stand out because it would be in the, kind of the ditch area between the two pieces of property. And it would protect the people on both sides of that fence and keep people from accessing the back area if there was training going on. So we got some quotes for the fence and 400 feet of four-foot fence would be $14,150. And so this would avoid, like I said, safety issues-related training. And part of that is safety for emergency services personnel because the training goes, that goes on includes live flames. You could have ATVs or dogs or whatever. So it would help with all of that. And part of this, an issue related to this would be the number of personnel that come in and out of that facility. And for the fire department, five out of the 24 members of the fire department are women. And for the ambulance, 17 out of the 20 members are also women. So just having that fence would provide a little bit of a higher level of safety for people coming and going. If they're visiting or part of the services personnel, or if there are kids that are coming and going with their families, that would be one of the benefits of that. So I think that was it that I had for that. So the things that have been put in place relative to community outreach, the breakfast, first one is on June 5th, 7:30 to 10. Julie already mentioned that. But that would be one of many over the summer, plus other events that would be happening. So, any questions?
Sure. Up to the microphone if you'd like and give us your name.
Can you please help me understand how a four-foot fence is going to protect women?
Well, one of the issues that we found at the, at the new building is that people are just accessing the property from the side instead of coming around the front. So it would prevent direct access and it would...
A four-foot fence?
Yeah, four-foot. I mean, it's not gonna be a complete impediment, but it would be a visual and slowing down people for access and directing them to the front of the building, which is what the thought was in the point of putting that fence up. Does that make sense?
Does that, does that make sense to you in terms of security?
Well, I mean, we could fence in the whole thing, but the point is that we're trying to do it in a way that...
Then there's a documented system to see who's breaching that.
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Okay, so there's a fence, then what? Do you document who crosses that fence? Do you have a security system?
Yes, we have cameras. And there have been documented incidents of people accessing the property.
Okay, so...
Not because there is no fence. So the fence would direct them toward the front of the building, which is where we would like people to access the building.
And that's where the security is? I'm just not understanding how this is effective.
So can you just...
You're redirecting the people that want to be predatory. Is that right?
Well, so we're not, we're not assuming that people are gonna be predatory, but we're trying to get people to come to the front.
Okay.
So that we're limiting access to the building from one side instead of three sides.
Oh.
So it's basically funneling people to the front where we have, during the day anyway, we have people who are in the offices in the front.
Oh, okay.
Does that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
For hearing me have that insight, yeah.
Thanks for that report, Lee. It's actually, the new building has been a catalyst for a lot of positive things. And it's good to see that a group is getting together and discussing a five-year plan so we know where we're going forward. I know the security thing has been, not security, but that has been an issue that was one of the original items that brought this all about and stuff. And I'm glad you've got a group of people discussing this and talking about it and thinking about all the possibilities and stuff. I just hope that that fence or whatever happens there isn't a direction at just the neighbors there.
No.
And that complex there. And that it's done in a way that it's still inviting looking from both sides and it's not, you know, obtrusive and, you know, kind of keep-out type of thing and stuff like that.
Well, that's why we thought the four-foot would be a good one because you can see over it, but it's not something that you can just pass through easily. So it would direct traffic around to the front, which is what the intent is. And being chain-linked, it wouldn't be a visual barrier. You'd be able to see through it. And being black, it wouldn't stand out and be in your face. So we thought that the combination of those three aspects of the fence would be appropriate for that particular application.
When the helicopter thing comes up, I remember when it was first talked about, we did get some pushback regarding zoning and the permits that would be required for that in the neighborhood and stuff. So that's a whole process that you would have to go through to even have something like that. So is that, that's gonna be part of the discussion or part of the process when you go forward with all that, I would hope?
So we're not talking about a helicopter pad?
No, but the fact that helicopters would regularly land...
Right now, they land wherever they have space. Ben could probably speak way more appropriately to that.
I would think that these two different situations are a little different. Wherever they have space because of an emergency or an area that is specifically set up to receive them without anybody there are two different items. And I don't know, maybe it's not a zoning issue, maybe it is, but it's something just to check out. I don't know the answer to that.
Well, and as far as, you know, I'm concerned, I think we should do some, whether it's a zoning or not, I think with a fence going up with your abutting property owners, it would be nice to get their feedback. And it would also be nice to let them know how do they feel about helicopters landing there at all times during the day.
Well, Heather, just to clarify, one to two helicopters a month doesn't mean, you know, all times a day. I mean, we have emergencies that we need to land a helicopter. You know, the horrific accident on 103 is one of those.
Absolutely.
So I understand what you're saying and I'm not disagreeing with that.
I think that when we do something like landing helicopters routinely next to an apartment complex, it would be good public communication to reach out to the people who live there to get their buy-in before we go forward. Whether it's a zoning issue or not, it's just being a good neighbor.
Sure.
And as the municipality, I think we should be good neighbors to the apartment complex that abudes our property, that we're putting a fence up now. So that can be construed in different ways. And also, if we are going forward with the helicopter, not pad, but landing. And I think we, before, I don't know if that's a select board approval thing, but we should really have the cost of that.
A cost of what?
You were saying that the lighting and flattening out the field, you know, just the cost of that versus the helicopter landing at the Catholic church or the softball field or, or...
So the lighting and the flattening is not related to the helicopter. It would be beneficial to the helicopter landing, but the point is that the lighting and the flattening would be for the training area. So the training needs to happen regardless of whether helicopters can land there or not. So it's an added benefit, if you will, that once that flattening is done and the lights are up, it would assist the helicopters landing, but it's not necessarily directed at the helicopter aspect of it. Which is a kind of, it's not a hesitation bringing it up, but I wanted to make sure that we understand that, we all understand that the purpose of that flat area behind is for training purposes, not exclusively, but it's a huge benefit for us as a town to have an area flat, open, and secure that we can do these training exercises either for personnel or dogs and with live fire or not. So that's the, that's the purpose of that.
Ben, I know you wanted to say something before and...
I'm taking it all in for a minute.
I thought you got cut off there for a second.
So I think, I think the concept of regular helicopter landings is, needs definition. And I think the saying two a month would be incredibly high.
Those are the numbers I were given.
And so I think we're talking probably closer to the once a month, if that. Do I think we should have good communication with them to be transparent? Absolutely, right? Good neighbors are good neighbors. As far as the options that we have, when we, the fire department gets called for a helicopter landing, and the first thing in my mind is, is anybody at church today? And to think about that and, okay, now the parking lot's full of cars. Where do we relocate? How much time do we have to do that relocation? Do we have coordinates for it? So on. So the idea of a landing zone is more just having a designated place that has the operational requirements of what DART is looking for. And so it's not going to be a...
A Springfield helicopter pad. It's just a field that has a fence around it.
Correct. And there are also, you know, the concerns of hazards are, are there trees or other things that might get blown into the helicopter or sucked in? Are there power lines? All these things that you're able to, in a place like behind the emergency services building, you're able to determine what those are. And as far as lighting goes, it's very minimal. And so that's, that's not a huge, a huge thing. We say the fields of the schools, but at the same time, they don't want that to happen at all because then they have the imprint of the tracks of the helicopter in the field and then they have to go repair it, et cetera. So there's lots of different things to think about as far as that goes.
Well, and I'm not, I'm not saying I'm against it, but we just started talking about it a few months back, six months a year. And we don't know the pricing on things and, you know...
I think good communication is great. What I would say about the ideas of a fence is, as someone who's been at this building multiple times and all of a sudden there's someone walking their dog out back that shouldn't be there, or there's kids cutting through, so on, there's an amount of liability there that if, to what, to what Lee is saying with directing them to the front, there's no chance of somebody getting hit. And, you know, I think that's one of the biggest things for it. And also, yeah, you want it to look friendly and inviting, but at the same time, behind the police department, behind the fire department, behind the ambulance service, is that one place in town that people need to be? And my opinion would be no. They don't. So it is our, it is the town's property. That's a couple hundred-foot section that, you know what? It's not a great place for you to be. That's my opinion.
Well, that's some good points. And the fact that it's for emergencies, it gives it a little more weight because when someone needs a helicopter and there's an emergency and there's something going on, it's nice to have a place that would be, this is where you can go, no matter what happens, whether there's someone there or not.
And I will say, so I'm in charge of the campus for the Fire Academy, and we have designated viewing areas. So if somebody shows up and they're like, I want to watch this because I'm a taxpayer, it's like, you're more than welcome to be here. But these are our sections that you're able to safely be because that's what we've determined to be. And I think it's, it's really no different. One thing I did want to clarify is the Fire Academy itself does not have a memorial. There is a memorial on the campus, but it's operated by the Memorial Committee, which is...
Okay. Good, thank you.
Corrections, police, and fire.
I'm glad that there's a committee looking into all these, all these aspects of the emergency service building. It's a brand-new building. We don't know what the future's gonna bring to it, what changes it might need, or what things are gonna happen there and stuff. And it's good to have a group of people involved making these decisions and things. And I think it's important.
I want to end this part on a really good note. So I set up Fire Safety Day every day at the elementary school. And they reached out to me this year and were like, all right, so, you know, we want to have you guys come down to the elementary school, yada, yada, yada. And we typically work one-on-one with the kindergarten class. And it was really nice to be able to say, how about a field trip to the fire station?
Wow.
And so both kindergarten classes are coming to the firehouse and we'll do fire safety there. And don't tell them, we're planning a hopefully little ice cream sundae action, but...
They won't watch.
We couldn't do that at the old, the old...
I don't think you'd want...
No, no. It would be a hazard to have them, for them, so...
That wasn't very conducive to bringing the public in there.
It's great.
That's a really great community outreach. And little people who can come to see the firemen and all that, that is totally cool.
It'll be a great day.
It will be a great day. That's fabulous. Glad you're doing it. Thanks.
So what's that called, Ben?
The memorial thing?
No, the, for the kids.
Fire Safety Day.
Okay.
Maybe it can be a tradition, right?
I've been doing it now for 20 years.
But that you take them to the new building?
But yes. Now they can come to us, which would be great.
Does anyone have any questions or comments or concerns for Lee while he's here and while we're talking about the...
I also wanted to open it up to either Steve or Amanda if you guys want to say anything.
It'll put you on the spot, Amanda. Steve?
Yeah.
You got a speech prepared or anything? No?
Yeah, I think you did nail it on the head.
Oh, Steve, you have to come up to the microphone if you're gonna say anything.
Sorry.
I just wanted to let you guys know, I think that Lee hit it nail right on the head and hit every point that we were trying to get across. And the biggest thing is public... And the biggest thing is public safety. We want the public to be safety while they're on either side of the fence, if there is a fence there. But it all boils down to, we want the public to be safe. So if we're training, we don't have, we don't want to have to worry about them coming over to where we are and getting hurt by, you know, accidents happen. So it's all about public safety.
Well, and it's also nice for me to hear a lot of positive things going on about that building. It's not like we just put the building up and it, it has made a really big change, I think.
And it's interesting too, the amount of people that stop by in the new station versus the old station. It blows my mind. In the old station, there was probably maybe a half a dozen people in the six or seven years that I've been here. The new station, there's probably thirty, forty people that stopped by just to look at the new building, so.
Well, and by the way, the, the lettering, I know it took a while to get up and it's been up for a while, but it looks fantastic too.
It does. So, so thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Great.
All right, Amanda, I'll let you off. Anything else? Any other questions?
Thank you, Lee, and your group that get together to do all this and stay with it. I know you were a big part of the committee when it was all being built and it seems like that was the end of it, but I guess it's going to be going on for a while. That's right. Thanks. That's right. And it's a great group of people I'm working with, so appreciate everybody's effort.
Next item on our agenda is to adopt our local emergency operations plan. There's been a few changes on it, Julie. Can you take us through that?
So the main changes on this document, this is the document that you adopt every year. It's required in order to get, in order to receive different levels of grant funding. The changes this year were, we had a change in ambulance chief. Dan is gone. Amanda stepped up to that position, so she's been added. We did change the primary emergency operations center, which the past couple of years has been listed as town hall. Now appropriately should be the new emergency services building. So that's been added as well. Other than that, the real content was reviewed, of course, by the chiefs and that really were the only major changes. So it would be a motion to authorize me to sign.
I'll make a motion for Julie to sign our, to sign our local emergency operation plan.
Second.
Heather's the motion and Lee is the second. Any discussion on this? Any questions? Any concerns? Anything? All those in favor of adopting our local emergency management plan for dated May 4th, 2022? Please say aye.
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 And opposed? You have a.
I've got it. It's just for me to sign.
Okay. Next item is just some housekeeping for some liquor licenses. The first one is for a first and second-class liquor license for B Better Foods Company. And it's ninety on the commons. So this is a brand-new?
This is a brand-new one. Yep.
So there's not much to ask about this one, then? My question is, when do they start serving?
All set?
Set. And the second one is an entertainment permit for PJ's Kitchen.
Mostly classic rock and roll.
That's right.
Usually it's on what, Friday nights or Saturday nights?
It's Friday nights. Friday nights.
Friday, Saturdays.
They had some good music over the last year there.
They had a lot.
They really do. Local people.
The next item on our agenda is our local cannabis control commission. And this one's going to be regarding the resolution, adoption, and the potential candidate interviews and appointments. In your package, you got a resolution for a local cannabis control commission for Chester, Vermont. And I think the only things that we had to determine on this one here, Julie, were, how many members? Did we have that? Oh, five members.
So you had initially said five. You may want to change that, given the number of people interested. So you initially said five members and you initially said you wanted two, no more than two select board members. I put it in as no more than two. And then the next one down is kind of how they're appointed. You had said that the select board members would be just one year.
And everything else like that. So before we get into the part about the people that are interested in being on this commission, I just wanted to touch base on the makeup of the commission. Now, originally, we did say that we were going to have two select board members on it, but we weren't sure how many members we had interested in being on this board in the first place. The fact that we have, what's it, seven or eight?
Seven.
Seven people interested, do we want to have select board members on it? Can we word it so it says and/or maybe select board members and just leave it as citizens? And if things change in the future, we have a little flexibility? Or if we don't have people that are interested in serving on this committee from the community, then we could interject a select board member or two if we have to? If not, then I would think that maybe we just stay with community members on this. And I was just bringing it out there for the board to think about? Or is that something that we would consider? Or should we leave it three and two? Or how do you want to go about this?
My personal preference would be to have select board members as part of this group. Just from the standpoint of our responsibility as leaders of town, being part of this group. And being able to answer questions or kind of give guidance as to what the board might be thinking and bring topics of discussion or questions back to the board, my, my opinion.
I think either way, I, I don't feel like, I think it's fine if there's select board members and I think it's fine if there aren't.
I like having the select board members. There's a, isn't the, isn't the state supposedly has a committee and they're going to be doing training for what, you know, the job is all about? And I, I think that, what I've understood recently is they haven't really moved too far ahead because they have a low workforce. They haven't been able to do the things that they wanted to do. But, you know, I think we had two willing people, raise their hand for the select board. I think that's great. And I think an odd number of members on it is the best way to go. So five or seven would, you know, including the two select board members. So, yeah, and I read through this resolution and I'm happy to support it.
And I, the state cannabis commission, they are having a little trouble with their permits and they're just starting to gear up on employees and stuff so they can keep the process moving quicker.
Right.
DLCT has a training program on Tuesday, May 24th at 10 o'clock. And I was going to bring that up after we formed our committee. And it's basically going to be for members of local cannabis control commissions to ask these questions, to talk about things, see what's going on. What are their, what is their authority? How does it work? And, because it's still in flux, a lot of it. I mean, I, I know that it's set in some guidance documents and stuff, but that could change depending on what input they get from the public and stuff too. So it's good to have this set up. And that, I was going to bring that up later, once we formed our committee, that the training is going to be available to sign people up that are going to be on this committee.
When you go to talk about that, I have something to add.
So my, I'm personally, I could go either way. My, the biggest thing that has been eye-opening for me on this process so far is the, what this board or commission?
Commission.
Commission is capable of doing, which is really just kind of reviewing and, to an extent, not much. And so my only thing is, and again, the education piece of it, just making sure that everyone that's on that commission is up to speed on the role that they are, they are filling. Is that something that would have, Julie, I'm not trying to sign you up for every meeting. Is there someone that would be there to be their guide as they work through that? Or is it just the commission?
I think you'd have that commission and that commission would nominate themselves a chair and a vice chair. I can certainly attend the meetings.
I'm not signing you up for that. But I guess my take would be, we have seven people, which is a, an odd number. And so that would work if, if we were to say at this point that nine is a very large group of folks.
Seven is all.
So that's, that would be my only concern on that, is that's.
So maybe put in wording that says a, a board of five to seven people and up to two select board members. So in this case, we would end up with five citizens and two select board members. People drop out, it gets smaller, it changes, it could drop down to five. And/or being included there, if the select board decides that maybe it doesn't have to be involved with this commission, they could step back and let the commission handle it themselves.
Or we could do one and the thought at one and six.
Those type of, that type of wording would give us a little, a little flexibility in the makeup and the size and how it works.
I think the flexibility is good to have it written in here.
So and/or?
And I like no more than.
No more than two.
Yeah.
And five to seven, five or seven members.
Yes.
Because the six, it just invites three and three and if it ever comes to that.
No, I agree with that. It makes sense.
Could I ask a question?
Go ahead, Lee.
From where did you get this resolution for the local cannabis control commission?
This was from the.
This was attached to the guidance document that I gave you at the last meeting. This was the resolution that they're recommending. It was written by, by the state. And then the two, be it furthers, that are specific to us as far as size of board and terms of appointment is language that I added.
We don't really have a lot that we have to do here when.
No, I'll just change that language of the five or seven. I can do that while you're doing interviews if you want. You guys can sign it.
Should I read it?
That's up to you.
Does anybody want to hear this? I guess I should read it because it is a resolution that we're going to be adopting. So it's a resolution for a local cannabis control commission, Chester, Vermont.
You're going to read and I'm going to go change it.
Sure. Whereas Title VII, Chapter 33 of the Vermont State statutes was amended in 2020 to provide for the safe, equitable, and effective regulation of adult-use cannabis. And whereas 7 VSA subsection 863B provides that a municipality that hosts any cannabis establishment may choose to establish a cannabis control commission. And whereas a local control commission may issue and administer local control license for cannabis establishment within the municipality. And whereas the commission may condition the issuance of a local control license upon compliance with any bylaw adopted pursuant to 24 VSA subsection 4414 or ordinance regulating signs or public nuisances adopted pursuant to 24 VSA subsection 2291. And whereas the local control commission may suspend or revoke a local control license for a violation of any condition placed upon the license pursuant to 7 VSA subsection 863B. And whereas prior to issuing a cannabis establishment license, the state cannabis control board must ensure that an applicant has obtained a local control license if a municipality has established a local control commission. Now therefore be it resolved that the select board of the town of Chester has voted affirmatively to form a local cannabis control commission effective as of the date of this resolution. Be it further resolved that the local commission will consist of five to seven members in total and will include individuals from the Chester community as well as and/or not more than two members of the Chester select board? Is that kind of what we had?
Consist of five or seven members in total and will include individuals, the stairs are long, of the Chester community as well as no more than two members of the Chester select board.
Okay. Let's get there if I don't have it here. Be it further resolved that the Chester select board shall appoint members of the local commission to serve initial terms as follows. Two members shall serve a three-year term. One member shall serve a two-year term. And two members will, shall serve a one-year term. Thereafter, any positions filled by the select board members will remain as one-year term and all other members shall serve for terms of three years. Be it further resolved, the local cannabis control commission of the town will review information provided by the state cannabis control board, review information provided by applicants for the approval or denial of a local, of a local control license, will communicate approval, denial, or conditions placed on the local control license to licensees and to the state cannabis control board. And D, comply with provisions of 7 VSA subsection 863 in Cannabis Control Board Rule 2.14. Said resolution is hereby approved this fourth day of May of 2022 by the town of Chester Select Board. So we need a motion to accept this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Heather's the motion and Lee Dakin's the second. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor of approving this resolution as read, please say aye.
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 It's official, we have a local cannabis control commission. We just don't have any members in it right now. Which is the next item on this agenda. And we did have it down for executive session with interviews. It started at around 7 o'clock, I believe. And we're going to do them individually and go down the list in executive session. I had a suggestion and it's up to the board whether they would go along with this. I don't really think we have much of a need to do this in executive session. Basically, the information that we got from the folks that were interested in this position spelled out a lot about what they were, why they were interested and a little bit about themselves. If you want, maybe we could do this in open session and just have the people basically say the same thing that's in their letter. Why, why did you want to be on this commission and a little bit about themselves? And then after we hear from all the people that are asking to be on this commission, we could do our executive session to discuss this regarding the appointment of a public official. I think it might save a little time. I, I don't see no heated debate we're going to have on these topics and stuff. And having it in an open session, unless there's a reason or somebody has a reason that they think it should happen that way.
I'm fine with it being an open session.
So am I.
I am. Everybody's okay with that? So at this point, I would, I would just go down the list and ask the folks that are. are looking to be appointed to this board to just state their reason why they wanted to, they would like to be on this board and a little bit about themselves. So on my list, Susan, I know you're keeping minutes, so you're going to have to, I don't know how you're going to do both like that, but Susan Bailey is our recording secretary and she's always with us by Zoom. And Su- Susan, can you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in being on this board? And I think you froze up. I'm not sure, Susan, we can't.
I'm the, um, from rural Pennsylvania.
Oh, there you go. We're not hearing you, Susan. Something's going on with it. We just caught Pennsylvania. What's that? Turned what?
Susan, can you try to turn off your camera?
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
My apologies.
Oh, no, it's okay.
I, um, moved to Chester a couple of years ago. I'm originally from rural Pennsylvania. I moved here from, um, northern Virginia DC metro area. Um, I've spent most of my life working in the legal profession. Um, I have worked for private practice and I also hold an associate's degree in, um, paralegal studies. Um, I have served on various boards, including um, a public school board for seven years. Um, I've dealt with, I've served on other boards, um, library boards, big brothers, big sisters, um, the Penn State Cooperative Extension, things like that. I've dealt with boards having to do with childcare, um, and children in general. I, um, I think my, I think one of the talents I would bring to the board is I've been described as, um, a mediator and diplomatic. And I think those are good talents to have when you're dealing in any board, you're dealing with various personalities. Um, and I've also worked in human resources and I think my experience in the legal profession would also be a plus to be on this, uh, board.
Thank you, Susan. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
My list next is Robert Need. Yep. Thanks, Robert.
Thanks. Thanks, Arnie. Um, I mentioned in my letter of interest that it's always been important to me to be involved in the community I live in. Uh, it's good for me. It makes me feel like I'm contributing something. Uh, I'm currently involved in a number of areas in the town of Chester. Uh, when I first moved to Vermont, I spent a year as the, uh, town administrator and zoning administrator for the town of Londonderry. So I was involved in a lot of issues related to both zoning and administration and also regulatory issues. Um, but I think the thing that is, is most important is what, um, what I bring in terms of experience because I think it can be helpful. Uh, I've spent about three decades, uh, in a corporate career as a consultant, uh, in the academic world, dealing strictly with regulatory compliance. Um, issues about the application of regulation, interpretation of regulation, that's been my career, that's been my life, that's my expertise. Um, and this really boils down to an issue of regulation that comes down from the legislators. And I also think there's a, a strong, um, possibility that this, um, regulation that we're dealing with now will evolve over time. If we look at cannabis regulations in other states, other communities, they have changed. And I think, um, when this industry shakes out in, in Vermont, that there may be changes coming from the state cannabis control commission, maybe even from the legislature, adjusting to the reality of, of what it means for a community, negative and positive. Um, so I think having the experience of interpreting regulations, teaching about regulations, uh, I was an advisor to the American Bar Association and I helped train attorneys and compliance officers on just that, interpreting regulations. So, um, I hope that would be helpful. So I appreciate the opportunity. Again, it makes me feel good.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you, Robert.
Next name on this list is Risa Alexander.
Well, relative to the town of Chester, I have owned property since 2015 on Upper Chester, Upper Trebo Road. And my young daughter, Mackenzie, and I live there now. Um, I first started driving up to and through Chester in 2015. I had a sick friend and we would come up once a week and then once every other day and then every day sometimes. And one of the things that, that was so nice was just driving through the town of Chester to get to Upper Trebo Road. There were flowers on the bridges and the town was clean and we saw the, um, Dollar General go up, the tree saved, the muted colors. And I thought, wow, what a, what a nice, what a nice town. And we drove through, um, well, the bridges and then the stone village. And it just seemed very nice. And over time, as we spent time here, we came to know the village green. We bought smoothies, we hung out, we used the, uh, town wifi to, um, play heyday when we were kind of into the whole little farming game thing. And we, we really have enjoyed the town. And in fact, you know, there's a lot of mosquitoes up on Upper Trebo Road. And there's times when I've come down and walked or run around the village green at night and always felt safe and comfortable there. Um, now, uh, one of the things that, that I really wanted to point out were two things that I said in my letter, two or three things. And that, um, I really feel that the new state retail cannabis laws didn't really provide well enough for small towns like Chester to ensure and maintain that sense of character that we noticed when we start, first started driving through and spending time here. Um, I think that particularly for the town of Chester, you know, the locals have spent many years and time and effort on improvement projects spearheaded by both the town government and also, um, caring community members. And I'd like to see that maintained, that, that sense of small town village character maintained. Now, I want to say that I'm absolutely not opposed to having a retail dispensary. As a commission member, I would hope to help our community manage the location, the environment, and any advertisement for a dispensary such that it doesn't have a negative effect on the town ultimately as a whole. And so, so that's very important to me. And also, as a commission member, I would strive to ensure that the relationship between the control commission and prospective dispensary owners is in no way adversarial. I don't believe that it needs to be or should be. Um, I believe we can all work together, the select board, the commission, community members, dispensary owners, and dispensary patrons to try to address and solve any issues or concerns that we might have. Um, you know, like I said, I'm absolutely not opposed to having a retail dispensary. I have, however, spent a lot of time in, uh, western Massachusetts, particularly the northern part around South Hadley. We lived there for a time before COVID. And, um, you know, you drive through Springfield on I-91 north or south and there's huge cannabis billboards. If you drive the back roads, um, Route 5 in, from South Hadley into Northampton, which is a reputable town, uh, you see huge cannabis billboards. And from an advertising perspective, although I'm definitely not opposed to having a dispensary, I think we want to be, um, careful for the sake of the town and the town character to make sure that we do have some say in how it looks, where it's at, how it's advertised, and make sure, again, that we can work with dispensary owners, our prospective owners, to avoid an adversarial relationship, but as, as citizens and members of the town, that we all look at the, the town character and the well-being of the town as a whole as we work to make these decisions together.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Next person on my list is Arianna Knapp.
Good evening. I'm Arianna Knapp. Uh, I've been a Vermonter my whole life. My grandfather ran Knapp Farm Supply in Middlebury, Vermont. My father graduated from Red, Virgens High School. I graduated from Colchester High School up north. I raised five children in the Upper Valley. Um, once all my kids were out of the house, my husband and I decided we could finally get out of the shadow of Dartmouth College and we came to Chester, where we fell madly in love with the home where the Morse Boys grew up. We've learned that's how we described that house. Um, so we love it here and being a Vermonter is part of who I am. It defines my day. I also happen to be an executive for an entertainment company that's headquartered in Los Angeles and New York. What that means is my Vermont identity. I wear like a gigantic flag every day. I've had to travel for the last 25 years all over the country. Um, thanks to the pandemic, my industry tanked and I got to go home. I've been home for three years and absolutely loving it, um, and don't need to travel anymore. And that's been the greatest joy. What it's also meant is I can finally engage with my community. Um, as someone who formerly, formerly traveled 200 days a year, that was not an option, but now I can. Uh, as a high school student in Colchester, I represented my town at Girls State in Montpelier and I went on to represent the state of Vermont at Girls Nation. Now, that might've been 1985, but it shaped me. I've waited since 1985 for the chance to reengage with politics, um, or with community engagement. So that's part of what brings me here. I will also be the first person to stand up here at the microphone and say, I'm a customer. I'm a consumer of retail cannabis. Um, I have been for a few years. I spent a lot of time in Western Mass, um, for work and for other reasons. And part of that also means I can bring to the commission, having visited and shopped in the dispensaries in five of the states in the US that have already legalized it. I have family in Colorado, Washington, California, Nevada, and Massachusetts. I've seen how these things can be run horribly and I've seen how it can be done well. For me, the most important thing at this moment in time for Chester is that we take a step back and recognize there is a new industry coming to our state. There's a new business opportunity and there are entrepreneurs. They want to come to Vermont and they want to do things right. The state has already gone to great lengths to ensure that Vermont's embracing of cannabis is Vermont. They have struck, struck down half the things that Nevada did, half the things that Washington did, and thank goodness, we already have no billboards. So that is not going to happen. My interest in serving on the commission is to get engaged in Chester, but also to look at those incoming entrepreneurs. Because if they were coming here to start a new business, we would welcome them. We would invite them. This is an opportunity for us to engage entrepreneurs as they start out in Chester. This is the beginning of something. Vermont has maple syrup, cheese, and craft beer, and craft artisans. Cannabis is a crafted item like beer. The growers who we don't, I, I'm fully aware that the commission has only got any jurisdiction over the retail. But the fact of the matter is, hopefully, there are growers and laboratories and various other elements of this industry that might be interested in coming to Chester. We have no control over that. If we have a commission, we'll have communication. If there's a lab coming to Chester, let's know it. Let's participate. Let's not sit back and let the state tell us what's approved and what's not. Let's engage. And that's really what I want to do on the committee is just engage. Engage with the town members, engage with the future entrepreneurs, engage with the select board. Let's do this in a conscientious, intentional way that allows business people to thrive in a way that's true to the character of Chester, in a way that represents all of us. Because if there was someone coming in town to start selling shoes, we wouldn't necessarily be able to talk with them about how their store looks. We have a chance now. We have a chance to be part of all of this. And I think if we can do it right, we're just setting a foundation for a growth industry that's, it's already legal. There's nothing that's going to stop the business, but let's do it in a way that works for Chester. So that's, uh, that's my commitment to Chester, my commitment to Vermont. And, uh, thanks you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the next on the list is Craig Miller. I think you're with us on Zoom. Craig, are you out there?
Yes, I am. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah, you can hear you.
Okay, great. All right. So great. Excuse me. Uh, which is why I'm remote. Uh, so I've grown up in rural communities all my life. Uh, started off in upstate New York in farming communities and trips in around the Adirondacks here. And I've been in Chester since, uh, 1994. And the thing that I love about being rural America, you know, is all neighborhoods, regardless of whether they're in big and small towns, you know, has their own unique culture. But what rural America, um, you know, is truly unique in its splendid culture. And it brings a sense of greater societal good, really, that kind of transcends all the secular and political beliefs, um, that exist out there. Um, professionally, uh, my career has taken me all over the country. Uh, and I've worked for, in a consult role, uh, for both local and international, uh, companies, uh, small to really huge Fortune 100 companies. Um, I'm at a point in time where hopefully I'm going to retire soon and I really enjoy the chance to give back to my community, um, like I used to years ago before children. Um, in the past, I've worked in several conservation efforts, uh, particularly in Champion Land that's used by the government. Um, and so I think what I can bring to the table, uh, because of my role, uh, is a consulting role and working on various committees. Um, you know, is I can bring a level head, uh, you know, and I base things on actual facts, um, and, uh, help people understand, uh, what that is and hopefully help our community, you know, develop a, uh, you know, um, a foundation for how we help this industry grow in Vermont. Um, it's here. Uh, and I'm kind of proud that Vermont led that way in legalizing, uh, cannabis and I'm also proud that Chester, uh, has voted to allow its retail distribution. I think it's a great opportunity for the town, great opportunity for our state. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. And going down the list, uh, Mr. Penske?
For once in my life, I'm at a loss for words. I don't really feel comfortable, uh, like competing for a position with peers in my community. Uh, but I guess, so I'm not going to look at it like that. I'm just going to talk about my interests is what Arnie asked. Um, as you recall, maybe from my Zoom talking a while back, I think it was my idea to have citizens be involved on this committee. Uh, I'm also on the, uh, on the, uh, planning board. I've been on for five years. So I think there's a relationship between planning and, uh, and this committee that, that I could be helpful with. I'm, I'm hoping you all, uh, read the letter that I wrote, uh, because this is a, a public forum. I'm a little reluctant to talk too much about some of those private things that I put in there. Uh, but, um, I, uh, one of my, um, interests, if I had the opportunity to be a member on the board, uh, would be to, uh, help us shape how, uh, this legal new business is perceived in the community and like public relations. Cause from my perspective, I think it's really important how we, uh, you know, allow this to come in and how it merges in our community. So with respect to that, um, and also, that's something that I've been fairly. So with respect to that, and also, that's something that I've been fairly good at with my life. I help with the Fall Festival, promote that. I promote my Big Buzz Carving Festival. I don't do a lot of promotion with my business because I'm very busy with the work that I have, but I think, I think a PR element, how can we integrate this so it doesn't really disrupt our town? I think that's kind of, that's kind of my angle. If we got people on different sides of this, it's going to come anyway, and there isn't that much we can do, you know, with respect to the regulation or the rules, because that's coming from the state. How can we make sure that this fits in well? How can we be stewards of this new thing going forward? And then the other thing that I, that I think that there are real issues around addiction, and especially in our rural community here. So one of my interests would be, if this is moving forward, and monies are going to be generated from the sale of legal marijuana, is there going to be money coming back for education around addiction? So as someone who's predisposed to addiction, like I realized I was at a young age, that would be an aspect that I would want to be a part of on the board. How can we get some of those monies back if there's monies available, and then have an education element for, for people in the community and maybe further out, so that part of having legal cannabis in our town, there's education about addiction also, so that we can help lower the rate of use for people that struggle with addiction? So that would be an element of it that is a little different than, you know, let's, you know, make this happen or whatever, but I think that that would be something that I'd be really interested in. And I hope that is a part of the commission when it does get set, because I think that's, it's a big issue around here. I know a lot of the people that are trying to employ people are having a hard time because people are struggling with drugs and alcoholism, and if we could get some cash coming back and some education and help, I think that'd be a good thing. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Thomas Simonzey.
Backed out.
He backed out?
Yep.
So the last person we have is Tom Dyak.
Thank you. Hi, I am Tom Dyak, and I have a background in museum management and physical plant management. I worked for Vermont Academy for 10 years. My wife, Linda, and I live on Main Street. We recently purchased a home after renting for many years. I have been affiliated with Chester since 1994. When we moved here from Florida, we had a gallery on the Green for a year or so, and then I went over to Vermont Academy. I am pro-business, owning a business and operating a business in Chester, and my experience as a business owner, and I think would be helpful and useful to the commission. We have an opportunity to introduce these new businesses to the town, and I would work diligently to see that it is successful, supporting you and the voters of Chester who voted unanimously in on cannabis. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. So that's all the candidates that we have. I'd like to thank all the applicants that are trying for this position. It just, it's encouraging to see this much community involvement, and it's appreciated no matter what happens at the end of all this. A lot of times, we have a hard time filling any of the commissions or any of the things that we get involved with, and I see there's a lot of interest in this. Part of it's because it's controversial, but part of it is also because most of the people sound like you're talking from your heart, and you care about this community. And I think that's a good basis to judge things on, if you care about your community and you care about your neighbors. We're going to go into executive session to hash this out and decide who the members are going to be, and we'll come out of executive session, and we'll probably make the appointments at that point. I don't know how long it's going to be. We're going to be in executive session. Sometimes it's pretty quick, sometimes we spend way too much time.
Do you want to go down to, are people going to stay?
Yeah, we could leave. If you folks want to stay here, I think it'll be easier for us to disappear, and we don't have to turn off everything that's going on and stuff.
We can call Lee Dakin. And we can call Lee from my office. Lee, we're going to call you on your phone.
Okay, good. I wanted to make sure I could be included in this. Thank you.
Make sure you mute yourself on Zoom.
Okay, I will. I will.
So it entertains a motion to enter executive session for an appointment of a public officer.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We're out of here. It's easier for us to go.